I'll call this meeting to order of the Board of Trustees for Tyler ISD. We do have a quorum, the meeting has been duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted and timed in a manner required. It does not appear that we have anybody lined up for public participation, so we'll move on to our continuous improvement in student outcomes. And it looks like we have a public hearing on the Texas Academic Performance Report, also known as TAPER for 2019 and 2020.
Board President Washman, trustees, we do have a public hearing today for the Texas Academic Performance Report, TAPER. For the 1920 school year, even though we did not take STAR exams, EOCs are, you know, still kind of out there pending as well. So we have Dr. James Kuratin, Dr. Kristi Hansen. Dr. James Kuratin is Director of Assessment Accountability for the school system. Y'all know Dr. Hansen, this Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, it'll be their job to present this data. We are doing this to meet compliance of statute, but again, we do not have last year's STAR data because we did not take a STAR test. So we will give you what we can give you off of this year's TAPER reports that we can be in compliance with statute. Dr. Kuratin? Dr. Hansen?
All right, thank you, Dr. Crawford and Board for giving us a chance to present this data. We are going to work through the Texas Academic Performance Report and just some of the, highlight some of the data that comes out of that. As Dr. Crawford pointed out, there's no STAR performance or growth data like we have historically had. So we're just going to talk about attendance rates, dropout and graduation rates and CCMR data. So last year, we were not rated because we didn't take STAR or EOCs. EOCs, we did have CCMR data, but we needed the additional data to be rated according to the state. If you look at where we were last year as a district, we were about 75.2% economically disadvantaged, whereas the state was about 60%. And we just want to highlight our attendance rate because our attendance rate was comparable to the state despite having a larger economically disadvantaged population. If you look at our graduation and dropout rates, generally, we performed better than the state. So you can see our annual dropout rate for middle school and for high school was much lower than the state. Our graduation rates, which is our four, five and year, four, five and six-year graduation rates, those would be our 2019, 18 and 17 cohorts. You can see our graduation rates for those longer cohorts are sufficiently above where the state is performing. And if you look at that and compare our graduates, our graduates were about 68% economically disadvantaged. The state was only about 52%, and we still graduated more of our students. So we just want to point that out because it's kind of a big accomplishment to, it's worth noting. If we look at our CCMR data, you can see that we, our CCMR rate was slightly higher. It was about 75% compared to 73 for the state. And then we just wanted to highlight some of the areas where we tend to, tended to perform pretty well. So those, for graduates, we are, we have more dual course credits, we had more graduates that were career or military-ready, so taking the college piece out of that. And then we have more that essentially got their certifications or completed that CTE coherent sequence coursework that we used to get credit for with CCMR. So you can see how much better we performed, especially with the certifications and the CTE coherent sequence coursework compared to the state. Again, despite having more economically disadvantaged students. And then those bottom two bullets, just point out, they're not just for graduates. Dual cre- dual credit course completion and our AP scores for ninth through 12th graders and 11th through 12th graders, we also, as Mr. Brown's pointing out many times, we did, did better than the state there as well. So we're gonna-
Questions on the part?
Go ahead. Does he want to have questions on TAPER or the Texas Academic Performance Report?
I think I have questions. Five years, five, five year, six year graduate.
So the, the four-year graduation rates are typical, like say, current seniors. The five-year graduation rate's going to go back and it's going to count an extra year. So it's going to say if we gave our 2018 cohort, if we say 2019 was our four-year cohort, 2018 would be your five-year cohort. So in other words, we added another year and said, okay, those kids that didn't graduate in four years, what percent of them graduated in five years? The six-year cohort would go back to 2017, so those kids that graduated in 2017 when they were supposed to, but then graduated in 18 and 19 as well. So we give two additional years, two additional opportunities for graduation.
That's typically students who didn't graduate because they didn't pass the assessments, typically. And there are kids who might go to rise, but a lot of those kiddos were able to get graduated in four years. Our five and six-year cohorts are typically kids who, for whatever reason, either were absent or withdrew or had a family circumstance that kept them from passing the required assessments.
And could not be great place committed, the GPC.
Could not be, yes, sir. Because they have to pass three out of the five.
That's right. And that's, I mean, being in this now for however long we've been in it, Dr. Hansen, Mr. Jones, on accountability for the last, what, 20 years since they started doing this, I do think that that was very honorable and ethical and moral by the state to look at these rates, understanding that kids have circumstances that are sometimes out of their control to get them graduated. So we try to get them graduated in four years, but, but I'm proud that the state has done some things morally to say that we realize that we have to graduate kids sometimes in five and six years, because a high school graduate is a high school graduate. And you should get credit for that. Before you move on, go back two slides to your CCMR stuff. There you go. Just a couple of things that I'm hearing on the legislative session that's coming. There's already been some bills filed, and there's already been some adjustments made on the CCMR, on the MR side of it, the military readiness side of things. So let me, let me address that first, that they've ruled from the agency on that. There had been some districts that really skirted the ethical boundaries of claiming what military-ready graduates were. Every, we give our, we give the ASVAB, is it ASVAB?
ASVAB.
With a V, right?
V.
Or F?
ASVAB.
Yeah, VAB with a V. Yeah, Victor, there you go. Not, what's F in military?
Foxtrot.
Foxtrot, that's right. Victor with a V. We give that to every one of our kids. My kid took it last year, I think I was taking it his junior year, I can't remember when he took it. But we give that to all of our upperclassmen. There were some districts that were claiming that if they took the ASVAB, that they were military-ready. Not that they had gone down to the recruiting office, that they had actually had some interaction with recruiters, or they had actually even said they were going to go, and they'd signed some type of precursor to a letter of intent, and then actually went and actually put their hand up and, you know. There were some districts that were claiming that, that were getting out of TEA jail. So they've really tightened this up. Do you, I can't remember all the restrictions they've put on it now, and it won't affect us terribly-
No.
-because we had been, we hadn't been skirting ethical issues, boundaries like that. What did, what did they tighten up a little bit on that, Jane?
So now, the student has to take the ASVAB, but then in addition to that, they have to, on their own will, meet with a recruiter, basically commit to enlisting and then have a boot camp date, I believe.
Right.
And so then they have to have, what we did generate for them is a, for students is essentially a, I'm going to say a list, but a numeric kind of set of steps where they will, along the way, have to sign or have the recruiter sign and say, yes, this student is still coming or not coming. And then they'll turn that into us.
Right. So, so if you're, I guess it's still dependent upon us to list those graduates as military-ready.
Yes.
And if you get audited by the state, then you have to have proof of that, right?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll keep that and we'll report them in PMS as military.
The other, let's see, I was going to tell you about military-ready graduates, that's one adjustment they're making.
One question there. So a new recruit goes to the recruiter, they have to go through MEPS. Does, is that what you're referring to? They have to make it all the way through MEPS before they are counted?
I think all they have to report back to us is the enlist, the boot camp date. So if something happens, because in a meeting I was in recently, we talked about, well, they could have that date, but then at some point, there's like a 30-day backout or something along those lines. If they back out at that point, there's not really anything we can do, because we'll have submitted that PMS date at that point.
Okay. So you're saying, I think you're saying that similar to the same thing, they've got to go through MEPS before they can even get to assign the boot camp date, right?
Right, right.
So they've got to get the MEPS completed?
Yeah, I think that's the one.
Okay, all right. The other thing that's, that's on here that's of interest for this legislative session is there's been some bills filed on vocational courses that, you know, on the CTE end. I don't think it's going to hurt us, but it's going to help rural school systems that don't have the resources that we do have, like the Career Technology Center, the budget that we have, the amount of CTE funding that we get, you can, you can understand, in West Coma, Texas, or Omaha, Pawpoot, you know, they may not have the, they're not going to have the Career Technology Center, they're not going to have the, the ability to go hire, you know, three or four business teachers per class or per campus. It's going to be straight up ag, ag-centered. And we have that as well, obviously, Dr. Nation, we do have, and we proctor and we provide instruction in agriculture education. But in a lot of other schools, small school systems, that's all they have, and that's all they have the funding for. So I think they're, they're seeing a way for accountability to be increased in some of these school systems for them to be able to compete in CCMR by relaxing some of the, or rewarding some of the things that may be a little bit more geared towards a smaller school system as opposed to the large comprehensive CTE program that we do offer here, all the way from business to health services or health sciences, to computer programming, to agriculture education, to cosmetology, to food service, and things like that. So, okay. Dr. Kuratin?
Okay, so we'll, we'll now shift from TAPER to RDA, Results Driven Accountability. This is another report we get every year where they just tell us if our numbers are kind of in line with what we expect. In prior years, we got evaluated in four program areas. This year, we got evaluated in three, so bilingual special ed and then other special populations, which is, used to be CTE and ESA, the federal evaluations. So you'll see, we're rated on essentially performance levels on this report. A performance level zero is where we want to be, performance level of four is, in essence, something that definitely we want to, we want to target to fix. And then it kind of scales in between there from a performance level one, two, or three. I just wanted to show you how we, how we scored. So there was not as many indicators because of STAR not being there, but in general, the majority of indicators we were evaluated on were performance level zero. So that's exactly where we want to be. We had three indicators that were not performance level zero, which, again, we'll look at those and see what needs to be done, but, but the numbers overall looked, looked pretty great. And then if you compare them to last year, we actually improved in bilingual and special ed. The other special populations, we didn't have a rating for last year, they didn't give that rating, that's new. So we can't really say how we did last year, but zero, an average score zero is solid. Special ed came down pretty dramatically, so great news there.
For the trustees that will be wrapping up their first year here in four months, just a little background information about this, we had a lot of items, now this is a new system, correct?
Somewhat new, yes.
It's the old PBMAS.
It's the old PBMAS.
Y'all are familiar with that, the Performance-Based Monitoring and Assessment System.
Essentially, any pro, any student that we receive federal funds for, we have to have a different accountability system, and this accountability system is the results-driven accountability. We report that to the feds, special ed, bilingual, how we spend our CTE money, all of that has to be reported through RDA.
Now, a few years ago, we had a lot of ticks over there with what would have been PL two, three and four. So we've really moved the bar. Y'all, I don't even know if y'all remember this stuff or not, but it was really concerning to us. And Dr. Leslie Greer did a great job in special ed, and Mina Naraho, now Anna Sangain, has done a good job on the bilingual side. So it's really moved towards the left, which is really where you want your numbers. So we can get that information to y'all, we don't have it available today, but we can get that to y'all too, that, of what it used to look like and where we're making progress now, if you need that.
And just, you know, that special ed, one in four, is, is a disciplinary one, we have more students in special ed that are being, that are going to DAP or being, you know, put in ISS or being put in OSS than other kids.
Off school, out of school suspension.
Out of school suspension or in-school suspension or DAP than their non-special ed peers. And we have things in place this year to, to manage that, so.
So what was happening on that was, is our, we have a philosophy that one student's not going to jeopardize the opportunity for the other 21. As a principal, Mr. Jones knows this, you've got to be creative on how you handle certain populations, especially special ed, because of whatever's in their ard or whatever is in their, their, how you can discipline special education students under federal and state law. We were a little loose on our, on some of our principal, former principals. Now, this is pretty old data, because we started tightening this up last year.
2018 data, it's lag data.
And then we really tightened this year with, especially at the high school level, correct? Middle school was getting this as well, some? It's not elementary, I don't think, is that correct?
We had one elementary.
We had one elementary. So we've got systems in place to where if there is a behavioral issue with a special education student, we have some on-campus opportunities for them to be worked with outside of the, of the classroom and in conjunction with the teacher that might remove that student that's having a bad day, that may be disruptive for the rest of the class somewhere else. So it's, it's more of called a smart ISS. I'm just going to tell you, we were doing a poor job at one of our high schools a couple, three years ago, on a zero tolerance thing about dress code and about-
Tardies.
Tardies. And that gum, we, we should have been happy that the kids were coming to school and that they had clothes on their backs to come to school. Instead, we were just running the halls and it got us in a jam.
Yeah, we were suspending them, sending them home.
It got away from us before we could figure out the data that was going on there. So that's what we're having to clean up now. We've got good leadership in place at the principal level, especially at Tyler High, to where that was really hurting us. I'm going to be fully forthcoming on this. Appreciate the fact we wanted our kids to act right, but when we were sending kids home that were actually coming to school, might have been a little tardy and may have been wearing their shirttail out, I guess, I don't know, we have a pretty modern dress code here in Tyler ISD. It, we're having to clean that stuff up, so. 18 data, we'll, we'll have a lot better data on this later on, so, in future years. Any questions?
Thank you. I didn't realize that was the end of the presentation. Thank you. No, we do appreciate the explanation of all those things as well, it's always good to know.
Yeah, a little shorter taper this year because of testing. Now, I think we'll have data as we look in future years. I do think we'll have a more robust TAPER report for y'all next year. Obviously, we won't have school ratings, but we should have STAR and EOC data for y'all, because we are going to give it this year, even though they've said that it won't count towards accountability. It's still going to count towards having data for us, which we need that, to, to make informed decisions about what we need to do with our, our plan of attack. So anyways, this time next year, you should have a longer TAPER report with better data.
Okay. Good deal. Well, you know, the kids have put the time in this year, and then our teachers and staff have put the time in educating, and it'll be good to have that data.
Absolutely.
See how we did.
Dr. Hansen, do we have, do they accept these reports?
Because I mean, we need to offer, I believe, an opportunity for public meetings, so public participation, and that way it's considered a public meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, yes, then they just accept, they just accept.
So they, we do need a motion, action on this, too? Well, we had public participation today, that's why I was asking.
Well, I think there's normal public participation, and then there's opportunity for board and public comments on that TAPER.
Okay.
I think, as long as you guys call it a public comment.
Okay. Yeah, so, yep, next on the agenda is an opportunity for public or board comments. I don't see any public here, so I guess we don't have any, and I think the board's commented. So we should be good to go.
Okay.
Okay. Are we ready to carry on?
We are.
Okay, good deal. We have a result-driven accountability for 2019 and 2020.
That was the present, that was the second part of the presentation.
That was it, okay. Okay, just making sure. So we're good. I think moving on to safety and security update, then.
Yeah, part of the governance calendar that y'all adopt every year, we have routine opportunities for presentations from different departments that y'all identify that are important to you. And anything from athletics and VPA and competitive academics, which was what we'll present at the actual board meeting next Thursday night, the regular board meeting. Today, we have Agent Jeff Millsleagle, the Director of Safety and Security for Tyler ISD, and Executive Director for Student Support, Dr. Jennifer Jones, that'll be presenting to y'all today our safety and security update for the quarter.
Good morning, thank you. President Washman, trustees, Dr. Crawford, kind of bring you an update. I was here six months ago, and a year ago this week, we applied and received about $300,000 on a school safety grant. Those funds came in in April of this past year. Those were specifically used for school safety. Some of the folks call it hardening the target. What we've done with those funds are installed monitors on every facility door. So if you come to any facility, you're going to see a little camera there, and you press a button, and that is recorded, and you tell them why you're there, and they can let you in or choose to say you can stay out. It's met with good reviews, especially in the COVID times. We've also upgraded the two-way radio systems. Our radio systems were antiquated, they're analog, and we're moving to digital. So we've hit four campuses where we were not able to communicate from the principal, the assistant principals, to the backside of the school, even though you could see one another. So we bought about 35 radios to upgrade that. We're adding security perimeter fencing over at St. Louis, since we're redoing St. Louis and health and security, police department, facilities are putting a whole bunch of cars and vehicles there, it's wide open in that area. So we're adding a fence, we've gotten bids, I've gotten with Mr. Loper and Mr. Grant, and we'll be doing that here shortly. The big thing that we're doing right now is we're installing bullet-resistant film on all the entrances to our campuses. It's phase one, they started last, a week ago Monday, they worked through the weekend, they started at OR, they're currently finishing up everything north of Fifth Street. When they get done with all the campuses, they're going to come back and add in the admin building, the, here, around this, this facility, and at, at St. Louis. So that, that's coming. But it's labor-intensive, they work till midnight every night doing this. So if you're out and about, you may see two guys in a truck, a van, at the schools at night, don't be alarmed, that's, that's what they're doing. The other thing we're doing is adding additional security campuses to all our, all of our spots, to include one that's right up there now that you may have seen or not seen. But now you know where it's at, so we, we have that. Dr. Crawford's above your head.
Oh, there it is, right there.
It kind of pans out this way. We, we're hitting all the campuses that we can with our vendor, they're doing a survey assessment with myself and others, and we're adding them to the CTC this week. Mike Carterfield came up last week, there needs to be some adjustments there. And they are also doing card access. We found during the audits that certain teachers would go into a courtyard and they were locked in the courtyard, because there was no way to get back in unless they had the key, and none of them had the key. So we've added card access, and we're also redoing card access over where maintenance was at, that is now going to be the bus facility there. And last but not least, on my, my side of the deal, started about four months ago working on the operations plan for the district, it hadn't been updated in a long time, and it was very cumbersome and long, and probably a lot of people hadn't really looked at it over the years. So we've gotten that about 95% of the way done in a draft form, and it'll be user-friendly compared to the thing that we had previous. So that kind of ends my portion, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them for you.
I've got two, I've got two comments before, after everybody has a question.
Turn it over. Oh. Well, one question. So the improvements you mentioned, were 100% of those covered by the federal, by the state grant, or did that include other district money as well?
District money is being used for cameras, but it, the, the grant did cover the monitors at the doors, which are, are very expensive, but that was covered.
The vestibule improvements is kind of in a long-awaited project here. Think about some of our older campuses, Caldwell, HOG, they weren't really designed that way. So we've actually, well, last year, we installed an actual vestibule at HOG. Caldwell's also got a little vestibule in there as well, but as far as the, what we called the baby camera monitors, I was, or the, the game cameras, I can't remember where that kind of started, but we were talking about how we needed some of that at one campus, and it kind of took off like wildfire.
Took off like wildfire.
Yeah, and, and so in saying that, those, those are the airphones with the camera in there that you have to buzz to be let in. That was a kind of a COVID-related thing, but it was also in response to the last couple of years of, you know, some of the bad things that had happened in other places to where they had access. Also, I think it saved us some dollars, because we did have some campuses that loved being free and wide open and wanted us to come in and build a third storefront in, I think Jack, Jack, Jack wanted a third, a third storefront built inside, you and I talked about it, Mr. Bergfeld, that we're going to fence the world, we're going to glass the world in, that we built these campuses with these barriers already, but then we had other campuses that were wanting more, they wanted a sliding glass window as well. So you go through the front door, inside the vestibule, be letting, be let in free and, free to the wor, you know, free to access, and then actually have to go through another vestibule to get inside the building. Well, since Agent Millsleagle came, Slagle came on board, certainly with, in support with the grant dollars that we received, or as supported by the grant dollars, we're able to put the bullet-resistant film on the outside of those, as, outside doors.
Outside doors and inside vestibules also.
And the vestibule doors. So there's a fix right there where we didn't have to go build a third barrier, and then the airphones, I think make complete sense for us. We want to be welcoming to our parents and everything too, but I think we're going to err on the side of safety when we can as well. Some of the more active campuses with PTAs have expressed some concerns, and we've been able to accommodate them as, as we can. But I think this has been a very smart project where we didn't have to go do a whole lot of additional construction as far as putting another vestibule in.
Very cost-effective.
Yeah.
Okay. So, just to come in, so the, the film is placed on the fluorescent glass and it prevents the bullet from going through it? That's the whole concept?
It is not bulletproof, okay? It's not bulletproof.
Okay, that's what I was trying to-
A bullet could go through if you know where to actually fire the round at.
Okay.
Or multiple rounds. What it does, and it's the film and the caulk that goes around it, it will stop the bullet from really, you know, going straight through a piece of glass.
Okay.
And it will also stop, when a bullet goes through a piece of glass, the glass can, you know, go through, go out, blow away.
Right.
Blow inside. This folds. So if you saw on the Capitol, those guys that were breaking in, where they broke the window and the glass didn't break.
Right.
That was the film, that's 3M film, same stuff, but at the Capitol, they didn't use the caulk. And it gives you more time, if there's a perpetrator out there trying to get through, it gives you minutes. It's buying you seconds and minutes to, to get away, call 911, duck out of the way.
And we also have some panic buttons.
There's, yeah.
And we're actually looking at more of those as well, kind of some pretty creative things that could actually be on the person of every staff person we have, if we chose to go there. But this really does buy us some time for a bad actor.
Yeah, I wish it could be what, what we say is bulletproof, but the cost of that would be tens of millions of dollars, and it's that thick. They do make it.
You've seen those before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Federal offices, some of them have it. This is the same stuff GSA uses on their federal buildings.
Okay. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jones. She has the socio-emotional side of things, I think she's going to go over the threat assessment update. This was something that came out of the 86th legislature, that we're, I think we're a vanguard in what we've been doing. Dr. Jones?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to give you an update on the reporting. We have to report annually. Last year was the first year that we had the threat assessment process in Texas as a requirement, and so we reported on November 30th, and that was for the last year, the past year. And so we will be tracking the data for this year, and we'll have to report that again in November of next year. One of the great things that Agent Millsleagle and I met with a company called Crisis Go, it's a student threat assessment management system. It's an excellent system that streamlines the process of monitoring and reporting threat assessments. This management system was purchased through the safety grant, and with that, it provides teams, you can distribute teams, distribute information between the teams, you can also have students, parents or staff members submit a threat, and that's instant reporting through this digital platform. It helps us also case-manage students who may have been submitted for a threat assessment, whether it's initial or a full threat assessment, if there's a plan that needs to be put in place to help that student to intervene or possibly the victim. This process and the system- This process and the system will help keep the case management tracking tool for us to be able to monitor those, and to also close cases and just monitor what's going on. But it's a great program for us to be able to communicate instantly through this system, but also to manage our threat assessments, and then have those reports so that we can submit those to the state.
You were telling me last week that this program does also send reminders and alerts to those that are part of that team. So if there's, X campus has a threat assessment, you got your principal, you got your sped representative, you've got maybe a teacher representative on there, all the different representatives.
And SRO, yes.
SRO. That it will actually send some alerts via email to say, hey, you haven't completed this part of the task. Because that was the thing that we were really concerned about, was the, there's so many things that are going on in the campus, the follow-through, and making sure we're wrapping, that we're on top of this, and then tying things up. So that's what this program does as well?
Yes, it actually, if you have a threat comes in, you can select the team members, you notify the team members, you can actually allocate the tasks, whether it's the initial assessment, you're the investigation part, a piece of it, where you've contacted the witnesses or parents, so you can report that part. There's also a mental health part, so the counselors, you can assign the counselors to complete that piece of the threat assessment. And so it notifies them, keeps them on track, and then they can communicate with each other within that. So it's a great system to be able to streamline it, but to make sure that everybody's following through with their tasks, and giving them those reminders. Any questions?
Just another little update, we meet monthly with our Safe TISD team, remember that's a pun, Safe TISD team. We had our fall semester meeting with Dr. Nation and Mr. Watchman. We'll have another one in the spring semester, and another in the summer, that will be compliant with what the 86th legislature put in place, is that correct? It's, is it one per semester and one in the summer, is that how it goes?
It is, there tends to be.
So representatives on there, or you have two board member reps on that, you've obviously got district representation on there that is our Safe TISD team, and then we also have someone from the police department, we have someone from the fire department. Who else do we have, Agent Millsagel?
Fire marshal.
Fire marshal, actually, yeah, that's right, okay. Is that it, as far as local responders go? We don't have any federal or state folks on that?
No.
Okay. I'm not gonna add them later on, so just, I wanted to kind of report to y'all where we're at on that as well.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, thank you for your report. Yes. Well, I guess that's it for that part of the meeting. I guess we'll go into executive session now. I don't, do you think we'll have any action to follow? Doesn't appear that we'll have any action to follow from executive session, so we'll go ahead and move into executive session.